Good afternoon. Hi, good afternoon, Majority Leader, Ian Mark Nakaya, Majority Leader, James Judith, members of the City Council, friends in the media, people of Cagayan di Oro. Considering that our Vice Mayor, Jocelyn Rodriguez, is cannot attend this afternoon's session of the City Council as he is attending a meeting in Manila of the Vice Mayor's League, I am now acting as the Presiding Officer. The 28th Regular Session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. Invitation, yes, this will be led by... Nana pa si George? Okay, so the regular pastor bishop of the City Council, Councilor Roger Abadai, will lead the invitation to be followed by the singing of the Lupang Hinirang and then the singing of the Cagayan di Oro march. I am requesting everybody to rise for a short prayer. Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the urgent ordination, my ordination as a bishop. Okay, may I invite you to pray with me? In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. We thank you, our heavenly Father, for Jesus Christ, your dear Son, that you have kept us today from all harm and danger, and we pray that you would also keep us this day also from sin and evil evil, that all our doings and life we please you. We also thank you, heavenly Father, that you give us abundance grace, and we pray to you, Father, that you will be with us, especially during this regular session. Give us wisdom, protect us, and unite us, Father, as we serve the people of Cagayan di Oro City. Father, we have plenty of things to ask you, especially our salvation, and we pray for, Father, that you have provided that any time that you would give to us, and we pray, Father, that you will be with us through your Holy Spirit in all in our undertakings. This we pray to your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, amen. The Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Again, good afternoon to one and all. I'd like to request the Secretary to call the roll and determine with the rest.
Honorable Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor, on official business. For the First District Councilors, Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimy Rose P. Moreno, on official business, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go King, on official business, Honorable Jose P. P.S. Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern E. Esparcia. For the Second District Councilors, Honorable Ivona Yacine B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lordes Isgaani, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Presiding Officer, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members, Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay president, and Honorable John Michael Elsano, City Esca Federation President. There is quorum, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There being a quorum, Majority Leader, Ian Mark Nakaya, what is your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good afternoon, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, and to our colleagues and friends from the media, fellow Cagayanons, mayong hapon. I move, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the dispensation of the reading of the minutes of meeting on February 13, 2023, and to consider the forwarding of its copy to every member as the reading itself.
There is a motion to dispatch the reading of the minutes before the last session. Any second? Second, there being objection. Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
I likewise move for the approval of this minutes of meeting.
Any second? There being objection, the motion to approve the minutes is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On special report portion, we have three members who would like to render their respective but special reports. First is Councilor Malvern Esparcia as regards his observation on the prevalent potholes in the city roads. And Councilor Roger Abadai would like to render a report on the medical and hospital waste. And the third is this representation on the socialized housing component compliance of the developers. So, Esparcia, Abadai, and Nakaya.
Okay, so we listen to this special report. First, Councilor Esparcia is giving the floor.
Our very young Mr. Chair, Honorable Edgar Cabanlas, mayong hapon. Sa atong mga kauban, mayong hapon. Sa atong mga kauban sa median, nagtanaw ka rin sa online, mayong hapon ka natong tanan. Mr. Chair, this is just very short, Mr. Chair. I know this is not the first time nga makadungugta nga there's a lot of people na mangutana nga no mangyod nga kani'tong mga dalan gabangagbangagan tapos di pa man ka natrabahoon, okay pa man tana. But ang akong special report lang, Mr. Chair, kay I know nga nga'tong mga kadalanan, usahay maguna ang pagbangagbangag, but eventually tungut kinagiprojekt mo nang bongkalon din siya eventually. Kaya lang, Mr. Chair, lately, medyo na'y nagpo-sa ako din eh, kuyaw kayo ang iyang first line. Unsa mo diha mga opisyalis, buta mo? Ah, nagid ang linya, Mr. Chair. Because kun tanaw na'to ni'ng picture, kung nakita na'to nga nanaguisagbot, so pasabot ani'ng Mr. Chair, medyo napasagda nagid ni, kay nanamay sagbot, so napakita nga morag dugay nagid siya, kay nanamay sagbot. Masan na siguro pod nga gituyo nagbutang og sagbot diha. So, ang ako lang nga ni'ng Mr. Chair, I think this is just an inquiry or maybe unsa baka, if ever, kung na- Greenage program ba? A greening, greening program, because Mr. Chair, kung imo nung nauton, kung project di ni, tapos ka rin natubo ang nagsagbot, so morag naitabong nga morag. I don't know, di ko gusto magjudge ani, kung napuspon ba ni o na-cancel ba ang maong project, kay nanamay mga sagbot. And I think this is somewhere in Carmen, Mr. Chair. Og, ang ako lang question ani, if ever ba, these are just my two questions. If ever ba nga ang contractor iyaning gibangagan, tapos eventually wala madayon ang project, kin sa ba or nabay panagutan ang contractor, o dapat ba iyaning ibalik sa original o tapakan ang bangag? Tapos if ikaduwa nga pangutana, kung ingani mandi ay nga morag napasagda namang yun ah, kay I'm sure kay nanamay sagbot. Ah, ang city engineers ba, nabasilay power nga kailangan kanisia mabalik sa original, because kung atong tanawon, medyo gi, medyo gausikusikta sa kwarta sa katawan ani'ng Mr. Chair. Guapo pa kayo ang dalan, di pa man sike siya buak, gibangagbangagan, tapos napasagdan, nanay nitubo nga sagbot. Mula na ang akong pangutana, Mr. Chair, dagan salamat.
Ah, salamat. Salamat, Councilor Bernice, imong report, maay kayo ng report. Ah, morag mga masitasan nga na. Gagming masitasan, yes, Councilor Gurli, Balaba, reaction?
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer, nag sa'ko mga colleagues. Ah, ko lang pangutana sa reporter, kung asa gyud ang exact location at tong picture? Exact location kay-
Ah, katong, ang nag PM sa kuha, ingon siya sa Carmen, tama, maharlika dapit nga dalan. I think that's near also the house of mayor, if I'm not mistaken, kanang-
Yes, yes, ako lang i-point out na when we report unta, we have to be sure where the location is kay di mapunta pwede magtagna-tagna, I think, I think na I think asa, asa bag yun ni, no, unta, sunod, oh, i-validate, iconfirm yun ni mo kung asa yun to siya dapit sa Carmen or sa asa ba na area sa Cagayan di Oro kay lisod ka ayok, kining mutubag ka o I think tuadito sa Carmen, I think duol sa balay ni mayor, dili ganic siya sigurado. Mula lang na siya, Mr. Chair, thank you.
So noted, yes, Councilor Calizo, General Calizo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mayong hapon kanimo.
Mayong hapon.
Guapo gyalang atong Presiding Officer with that kind of baroque.
Di na gumulak ako, di ni, di ni ako bigay. Ay, pala bigay kay di ni.
And of course, to my colleagues in the current CDO, City Council, og sa atong mga bisita mayong hapon, while I subscribe to the suggestion of the Honorable Gurli Balaba, I also appreciate that report because I, I myself is fond of roaming around the city, and I see really those kinds of roads, unfinished structures. And there's really a need for a legislation, a legislation, an accurate legislation on this. Who are supposed to be responsible in monitoring? Who are supposed to be responsible in taking appropriate actions as regards these deficiencies, Mr. Chairman? Because if we just let it go, then the people just keep on criticizing us, as if we're doing nothing. So, we need, of course, to call the attention of these issues, be referred to the Committee on Engineering and Infrastructure, and maybe to the Committee on Barangay Affairs, because if these portions of the road are within their respective barangay territories, they too should take appropriate action even in just reporting, Mr. Chairman. Kay and of course, a little while, I have conferred with the Majority Leader and of course, our current Presiding Officer, that it is high time for us to put up a technology-aided monitoring of all of this, Mr. Chairman. But meantime, may suggest that this be referred to the appropriate committees, specifically Committee on Engineering and Infrastructure and the Committee on Barangay Affairs. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Before referring this to the committee, any other reaction? Yes, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This has been an issue all over in Cagayan di Oro in implementation of the district or DPWH projects, Mr. Chairman. It's not only now, it's not only in the past three, five, 10 years, but it has become an issue because of lack of coordination and collaboration with the city government on the implementation of the national or even congressional budgets, Mr. Presiding Officer. Even in District 2, we have in Tambo. I understand that even the Presiding Officer is using the road and there is blatant and apparent manifestation of substandard implementation of a government project. After leveling the, the concreting of the canals along the road, Mr. Presiding Officer, you see holes destroyed after just few weeks. In other words, why is this happening? In other words, siguro pag tap-tap, digid pareha kabaga sa dalan, kay ang dalan namang gapon, pero ang katumbagong project ah, nabangag man. Ah, dagan ra ba mga tracks ga agid ya, Mr. Chairman? Because it's also a quarry area. And instead of rectifying the, the faulty implementation, they just block with wooden stand to appear that it's a warning to all motorists not to drive through this side of the road. Ah, that's not the solution. The solution is to rectify really the infra project. So, if this be referred, the potholes, ah, why not our Committee on Public Works clearly check the entire personal matay mo. Identify the issues along and covering our roads. Kay nasulti lugar public works. Anyway, we all know there are dynamics within the council. That's my manifestation of support and at the same time, Mr. Chairman, that the extent of the study, review, and aid of legislation, exercise of the committee should encompass all roads, whether implemented by the national government or the local government units or by the barangay government. This should be carefully checked and inventoried and at the same time, report to the appropriate agencies, to the mayor, to the engineering, to the deputy manager, and to the City Council. Thank you.
Yes. Any, ah, yes, ina, ato kani ayon kay di ni, may ni, I, I want to hear recommendations. I'm not speaking as Presiding Officer. I'm speaking as a member of the City Council. I want to hear from the Chairman of the Committee on Public Works, recommendations declaring particular contractors as persona non grata of the city, blacklist them. If we can see that they are not doing their job properly, let us not be afraid of doing that. We have been doing that in the past. Nakita na'to, maay ka na. Tama, look. Yes, nga, nyanang may laki nga.
Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Presiding Officer, no? Anniversary day to the late Councilor, Councilor Cholol Pu Bunglaw, who is the Chair on the Committee on Public Utilities, first death anniversary of Councilor Bunglaw, no? And then, but if I may proceed, Mr. Presiding Officer-
Yes, I proceed.
-to the 28th City Council, friends from the media, fellow Cagayanons, mayong hapon ka natong tanan. Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer, sa paglingkod palang ako sa Committee on Public Works, kung morag mahulog 'yung kadagdag ni mo buhukan eh. Because of the prevalent problems of the practice long way before, nga kanak lagi, gakabangagbangagan dalan, dili gakahuman or mag-implement of project without coordination, nga nisiminto ng dalan pero ang pusti, tos tunga. Nahuman na ang tulay pero ang tubig sa water district, papas tunga. Dili mahuman ang project tungut kay ang pusti, wap panabalhin. And then, of course, naputay kakakitan nga, bago pa nahuman ang project, magihan og sakinan, kaloyosigino, masutpod ang sakinan. Muna nga, ang naamagid sa atong ordinan sa Mr. Presiding Officer is that kung naayi implement ni mong project diha sa atong mga kadalanan, labina maapektahan ang ato ang traffic flow. Mangayon na sila closure order or executive order from the mayor. And then, ang gaaproba na is ang atong Road and Traffic Administration. Through re-recommendation, himuan na yon og executive order. Now, ang akong nakita ni Mr. Presiding Officer, base amo ang pagtuki sa maong komitiba, is the lack of coordination. Coordination between the city, coordination between telcos, coordination between water utilities, coordination sa ato ang mga kaigsuunan nga maapektuhan sa maong proyekto. And that is why naanakaroon sa atong komitiba nga hopefully would be supported by the council ang pag-create sa engineering and infrastructure coordinating board. That all the projects in the city of Cagayan di Oro, kinhanglan well well-coordinated daan. Before implement next year, karun nga tuig, dapat naibalan og napasa na sa atong mga utilities. Ngamuning maapektuhan sa atong RTA, munin ang mga roads ang possibly masira. Kay munin among projected nga next year, munin among ipasira. Asa dapit na'to ni Iroth or kung unsa ang mga necesaring atong pagahimuon. Munin nga, gikinhanglan gyud mahimo ang engineering and infrastructure coordinating board. Sa special report ni Councilor Bernie, kung wala kumasayop na ay ah, proyekto diha ka ng pag, ka ng gibangagan ang dalan tungut kay himuan og kanal. Siguro na ay nagchange order kay gipadako ang kanal munang nga wawah na hurut o gapagimplement, yulatan pa ang next budget nga musulod. Muna nga, importante kayo, Mr. Presiding Officer, nga para malikayan atong inanin ng mga problema, ang coordination. No kay, na may usahay god nga mag-implement of project ang ato ang guberno, let's say for example, wala'y astik ba? Ah, pagabot dito, table mapping lang, gibanabana unsa kalayon, unsa kabaga ang simento. Pag implement na sa project, uy naman di balay. Wala ay, wala'y allocation sa maigo nga balay. Pagabot dito, wala nila natanaw nga, unsutable de ang mga, ang, ang, ang ang kining yuta, kinhanglay, kinhanglan di pulihan, unya, wala dito sa ilahang, wala dito silang POWs. So, inanak ng mga punto, Mr. Presiding Officer, nga hopefully, through the creation of the engineering and infrastructure coordinating board, which will be chaired by the mayor, para dili nila masiging-siging ang atong RTA nga issuin namig executive order kay nanami notice to proceed gikan sa DPWH. Mapresyo ng atong RTA, luoy putin taon sila, Mr. Presiding Officer. In fact, nakaduol lang atong RTA kay morag, gawat, gawat, na munikaya. Kaya mag-implement, let's say for example, kanang diha sa may Gaysano, going to Abilianosa. Akulang ng isight, nga project, kanang sa may UCCP, mulahus na dito sa kining project bitaw na datong boulevard, Prinsidor project by J, funded by Jika. Na ay himuon diha nga drainage culvert nga three meters. Ang pangutana pod ang problema kay ang outlet. Kay dili man pod pwede musugot nga ang Jika gubaon ng ilahang proyekto. Sumuna ng mga punto, Mr. Presiding Officer, nga kinanglan tuki undaan sa engineering and infrastructure coordinating board para nga sa layo mapangitaan og pamaagi. Unsa onisya pagsulbat. Kay kanadhi dapat dili namodiretsyo dito sa ato ang suba. Kaya kanadidapat, dilim namudiretsyo dito sa ato ang suba. Kaya dapat ang outlet diha, naaman sa other areas, makabalan man dapat ang naa sa UP Planades, dilim diha sa may konsulasyon. Pero arang-arang na lang ang elevation diya, Mr. Presiding Officer. Ang problema gyod kaayon ato is ang kining dapit sa may kauswagan area. Kaya ang elevation sa atong suba, mas taas kumpara sa elevation sa dalan, sa may kauswagan corner. Muna siya nga, kung mutaas ang tubig, mubakflow ang tubig sa suba musulod. Muna nga, nagpropose po ng DPWH, karon nga butangan ug floodgate. So the Engineering and Infrastructure Coordinating Board, hopefully, will solve these prevailing problems nga may sgutan yod, Mr. Presiding Officer. Hopefully, it will be supported by the council. And that's my friendly recommendation, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to you.
Okay. Response from the reporter, Bernie?
Thank you, Presiding Officer, Mr. Chair. Again, ah, three points lang. First, my apologies for wala ko is, wala is specific address, ang GPM lang sa ko is, that's in Carmen, Mr. Chair. Ikadua, I strongly support, Mr. Chair, ang imong statement ka ganina, na tanadita mahadlo ka niya atong mga contractor, kung, kung dilim maayon ilang trabaho, mablolisted na sila, and kung pwede palang declare as persona non grata. And number three, Mr. Chair, I'm so happy sa gisulti sa atong Chairman sa Committee on Public Works, and also I saw him, no, kaya every session, gauban ko, sa among Chairman na nadin, I saw it nga, takog 'yung problema, ano 'yung public works. And tana mapush gune, and I think ang key lang anitanan is the political will. Pagusto, ang daming paraan, pagayaw, ang daming dahilan. Dagansalamat, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Roger, Abaday. Reaction?
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officers, Officer, my colleagues in this twentieth City Council. Actually, the truth of the matter, no, ganong, naitabuna. I hope, I will invite Councilor Bernie to picture also the road of kaswagan going to initse. Mogia puna nga, mogia puna ang karun, marag, umag motor ka, marag ka getrill sa motor. Tungog ibang-bangagan na anto karun, wala giapon ma trabaho. That is the usual practice of the contractor, nga ilasang bangag-bangagan, to proof, proof nga nagsugod na sila ug construct, para makakobra sa kining mobi... mobilization fee. Muginak, kung di makakobra, di sanila sana, timan, muna ngitubuan ug mga sagbut katungna kuwan ni Councilor Bernie, muna nga ipantubuan, kaya di isla musugod, kung di isla papa makakobra. So, muna nga, I hope that the Chairman of the Engineering Public Works, nga will call the DPWH, kaya kesagaran niya gabaylit niya, DPWH, dilim na atong engineering. Ang DPWH, so, kaya mga contractor, labina mga contractor di tagadini, usually taga other places, muna ilang practice. Patuka sa samyari lumbia, kabula, mogia pun, wala pa ma trabaho, sigilang giapon bangan. So, I hope that in the next meeting of the Chairman of the Engineering and Public Works Committee, we will have to remind or, shall we say, sa oban ini Chairman, ya bani sabunan, kani mga contractor, nga dilis na sile pesugod, kung dilim pasilar ready to proceed with or without the mobilization fee, they have to wait, and when they start, they have to work it immediately para to avoid inconvenience of the public. So naitabunin, inil all places in Cagayan di Oro. So I think this is timely that we have to stop this practice of the contractors. Thank you very much, Presiding Officer.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Roger. Yes, Councilor James, you do this.
Mr. Chair, sa imo diha maupay, sa atong tinahod mga kauban sa konseho maupay. Inani lang, pangutahan na lang ko, tumbok na ko, Mr. Chair, kaya namang ko kaya gimbangat ganina nga persona non grata. Ang akong pangutahan na ni Mr. Chair, wala pa manggud ko, New Bee, Bingen, New Bee Councilor, gusto na kumasayod, kung maghimutao na ay magisyo ang atong konseho ug persona non grata, unsa'y mechanics, unsa by sakit bani sa kining hingtungdan, kung pananglit ato siyang misuan ug persona non grata, makaapekto basaya, nga para gyod nga, sa sunod, dilim na niya himoon. O kani ikadua din ako nga pangutahan na, Mr. Chair, di ba, kung usa sila magbuta, naaman sila gay secure nga mga permits or some mga clearance sa ato pong dakba yan, di ba gay require ba na to, kung wak kumasayop? Gay require ba na to sila ug bond? Na may bond, ano, Mr. Chairman? Oh, so ikat sila atong bond, di ba tagaan naman na to sila notisya, gawas sila nagtuman, ikat sila atong bond, gawas atong persona non grata. Kung muna lang gusto na kumasayod, Mr. Chair, makaapekto ba sa ilake, basing titulo lang ang persona non grata, pero dilim sila kakasakitan. Moro to, Mr. Chair, dagansalamat.
Ah, okay. Question? Di ibig ko reporter, ha? Anyway, persona non grata, that means that you are unwanted here in the city, and you can copy for nice the Department of Public Works and Highways as part of the record of that contractor. So therefore, if ini, there will be another bidding, or they will participate in another government project that would form part of the record. Ah, nga rasa DPWH, gung respetuhan, batao dilim, basta, we have expressed our sentiment, nga wata ganayin, no tawanan? Para ikadua, ha, kanang bond, dituro na sa DPWH, di man taga-confess kita na. So mula ginan... Oh, yes, dugangan, ganyera pa ta, siga dugangi.
Yes, basis sa ato ang revenue code, kung wak kumasayop, Mr. Presiding Officer, out sa ilahang project, they would be a ten percent bond, nga ibutang sa atong city treasurer, which will not practice long way before. And I'm taking this chance to thank Councilor Gurley, because we have talked with Director Zainada Tan of DPWH, that that ten percent will be implemented this year, nga before they would execute the project, kinahanglan na agi bond ang contractor, nga ten percent. Kaya kung dilim nila mahuman within the expected time, possibly pwede ang city government katungga bond gamitun para mahuman ang maong proyekto. Bunay naas ato ang revenue code, which will, wala na implementar lugar kanya to. But kung mahuman nila, Mr. Presiding Officer, katung ten percent kailang bond, ilar putong makuha, kung one hundred percent complete na ilahang proyekto. Bunay naas ato ang revenue code.
Makuha nila kung cash bond, tabi ug bank, gikan insurance, di na sila kabagadan, di sila makarifan, kaya nagyabayran premium, man. So, pero, mubalik na lang si Adam, di pa na ma... Ang ato is, let us taq them directly, ha? Probleman na nasdipan dibulis kita, pwede na to, na sila, we can, we can do something to hurt them. Kung muna ilang plano nga, muna ilang, balik-balik ko nila nag... Gubaon nila karsada nga, kapatsada, pakikin karsada, ilan na gubaon? Katung nung gubaan, munidilin nila gayon. So, inya the reaction, if there is none, then we shall refer this special report of Councilor Sparsia to the Committee on Public Works and Engineering for Proper Disposition. So, she can reporter, Councilor Roger Abaday.
Thank you very much, once again, Mr. Presiding Officer, my colleagues, and the old people who are listening to us today, in virtual and in face-to-face. May Hapon sa tanan. My report is about hazardous waste, like toxic substances, no, coming from the hospital, medical waste, healthcare waste, mga dental clinics, and other alternative medicine clinics or other similar establishment in the city of Cagayan di Oro. I have received some complaints or suggestions from different owners of medical clinics in Cagayan di Oro, especially the President of the Dental, Philippine Dental Association of the Philippines, ni Academy Base, ako na siyang, good friend, Dr. Oi, yang raise and concern of their burden and difficulties of disposing their medical waste. Galisud sila ug labay sa ilang mga waste nila, dilim lang, denta, kung dilim asta mga hospitals, government or private hospitals. Now, kabalo ba mo, asa sila galabay, karun, mutan ako, sa clean row, sa dinar, dito sila mulabay sa Dabau, ug sa Cebu. Now, ang, ang, sa una, doldol diya sa gulang, pero, I don't know to, kung nagoperate, bagis iran man to sa IMB, kaya dunay, IMB, kaya dunay, I don't know if they're operating. But considering the distance, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, galisud ang atong mga, ang atong mga medical clinics or hospitals, pagka nagdud ako nga, basi, gaisago lang nila naglabay dito sa sanitary landfill, kaya dunay report dito sa Pagalungan, nga na 'yung mga hospital, uh, kuwan, mark hospital, dito mulabay. So that is in violation of our ordinance. We have our ordinance number thirteen seven one five dash twenty nineteen, it was approved twenty nineteen, uh, ordinance providing for proper handling, storage, collection, and transport, and treatment, and disposal of hazardous waste, providing penalty thereof. So that is a, a, tantamount to our ordinance, Mr. Chairman, and against a public city. Now, naatai kuwan, I heard sa Clean Row, that whether our, naatai treatment facilities diya, with this kind of waste, kung gapunction ba, now, nagsulti siya nga kuwan man, marag, biological sakit sa babae, now is simin, now you don't. For me, ruga function karun, until now, it no longer functioning. Dapat onta katung nagwa-manage atong waste, management, appeal na na siya sa kontrata, nga no, anto karun, wala giapon ma-operate. So that is the problem now of the city of Cagayan di Oro, where to dispose their waste, imagine, wato kapas Dabau, Cebu. So, perisyo kayo, now, how can we provide service to this kind of business establishment? They are paying taxes, they are paying, they are contributing revenue to the city. Now what services that we can provide? So that's the question, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, that, so, under the city ordinance, section sixteen, these are prohibited acts, no, illegal disposing, and this waste management should be managed by our city health and Clean Row. So, in the next session, and in the next, I would like to invite, with this support, with this concern, with the Chairman and my colleagues, I am referring this, kuwan, this issue to the Chairman of the Health Committee, Councilor Maluga Ani, and my committee, to invite all owners of the medical clinics operating in the city of Cagayan di Oro, as to how, as to where, they are disposing their medical waste, dinisak Cagayan di Oro. Dapat, that they have to report to the dinar and to our clean row, where are they disposing this, kuwan, how do we know that they are disposing in Dabau and Cebu? And where? So that's the issue that we have to settle in our committee, Mr. Chairman and my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Roger. Any reaction? Yes, Councilor Romi, Kaliso?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. If you go to Pagalungan, at our sanitary landfill, there's a clear mismanagement of the landfill, especially in the disposal of this kind of waste, because obviously, if you go there, you can see that there are hazardous waste, but there appears to be a semblance of, yes, someone, someone uganaan at diha, nobody cares. Now, my question is, if the lapses in management is being, well, is by Clean Row itself, who will, who will, who will judge them and penalize them? Because there's a clear lapses in management in that particular area, Mr. Chairman. Patuka dito, makita maginam, muna agi mahazardous waste. Sometimes I go bike, I go biking and visit the area and see a lot of hazardous waste, and there appears to be some lapses, Mr. Chair. Now, if Clean Row is the one committing the lapses, kinsa may mamuyad nila dito. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Yes. Balik aponesa, balik aponsa reporter. So, very good report. At least, the Chairman of the Committee Environment is very honest. He is not defending the, his own committee. So let us refer this back to the reporter, Environment, and with, intanding with the Committee of on Health, for proper attention and investigation. So, ordered. So third reporter, our majority floor leader, Ian Mark Nakay.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I've shared this report earlier with the Presiding Officer, as regards the socialized housing component compliance of the high-end real estate developer. I could recall, Mr. Chairman, I joined the sort, one of the sorties of Mayor Rolando Clarex Oi, together with a few department managers and Councilor, the Chair of the Public Works, Councilor John Michael Seno, in Cebu. And one of the meetings that was scheduled during that, that sortie was meeting the, the Cebu Landmaster owners and management, prior to their implementation in the area of Manresa. They presented, of course, the plan, program, that they would like to endeavor in Cagayan di Oro. In fact, according to them, that in the Manresa area, they will put up a five-star hotel that is known, and I don't want to reveal the name, that is known to the worldwide five-star class of type of hotel that will be established and hosted by the Cebu Landmaster. And that's a great news. And during the exchange of discussion, Mr. Presiding Officer, because of their joy and that they expressed gladly to the city mayor, that they committed to the city mayor and those present, on behalf of the government of Cagayan di Oro, that they will advance their, this socialized housing component, that is fifteen percent for the horizontal and five percent for the vertical, accordingly, as mentioned by the Presiding Officer earlier. In other words, they just want to have about two thousand or four thousand square meters in the vicinity of the Publación, so that it would be a tenement building, which they already implemented in Cebu province and Cebu city. In fact, they have shown to us the, the, the design, Mr. Chairman. And just last week, I asked the city planning officer, who was designated to facilitate the implementation, and according to him, the progress after the meeting that we have had in Cebu, was that it was referred to TUD, and for the TUD to identify the area where these tenement buildings will be constructed for our social... to the local government unit and the city would be implementing. And instead of that, they will implement immediately. And it would be then accounted for by and between the developer, the Cebu Landmaster and the city government of Cagayan de Oro. Whether it, the cost is about the large amount for the fifteen percent value of the developed high-end project of the company. And since there's no progress, and incidentally, I was in the mayor's office last week, Mr. Chairman, and the Philippine-based orb, ah, Habitat, Habitat Philippines, not the UN Habitat, but the Habitat Philippines was present together with the TUD head, the city administrator, some other consultants and officials. And it was also mentioned, because the Habitat Philippines would like to implement projects and course through whatever resources that they have and facilitation coming from the regional and government agencies that could partner the city government, they will facilitate. And one of the topics discussed, Mr. Chairman, is the equity, the component, the housing component. And the city mayor asked this representation whether we already have the ordinance that no way, like what happened in the past, that the fifteen percent or the five percent will be implemented outside the Cagayan de Oro. And it should be enacted by the city council to mandate all developers for their house, a socialized housing component compliance within the city territory. So on two matters, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the offer of the Cebu Landmaster to advance the fifteen percent or the five percent if need be, if, for example, they will also implement vertical project. Two, ah, for the TUD already to identify the area and for the ordinance that is essential for the implementation of the compliance requirement, Mr. Chairman, both of them be referred to the committee of the Presiding Officer. So, so that there would be a follow-through, Mr. Chairman, at the level of the council. That's all for my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilor Ian. So we have this ordinance which I passed. It was in two thousand six. Yes, it's already mandated. Not one was extended. So this is the ordinance we have in two thousand six.
That's good, that's good, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I'm mistaken because I, I, I did not.
Adugay na ni. Two thousand six pa.
Two thousand six pa?
My last term as city councilor, my first.
Okay, okay. Anyway, but it's not twenty percent?
It's twenty percent before, no, fifteen percent lang.
Oh, we, we need to amend the ordinance to fifteen percent based on the requirement of the national law. And on, on that aspect of the first part of the report and on, on the second part of the report, on the first aspect of the, first of the report is to check with CPDO and, and TUD as regards the compliance of Cebu Landmaster for the identification of the property for them to construct the tenement buildings, Mr. Chairman. So, yes, both planning, planning. CPDO and TUD.
We will, we will consider the manifestation, the report of Councilor Ian on Wednesday. We will be meeting with the, with the committee on the, on housing. So, yes.
Ako lang na nisingit, Mr. Chair, no? Katong, Mr. Presiding Officer, katong gi, naiskutan po di Council EB Imano tong niaging simana sa atong kaniayang session nga, kumahi mo na atay listahan sa dili lang sa kang Cebu Landmasters di katong sa entalyo, kundi sa tanan nga katong naay lang requirement sa social house, socialized housing component.
Nana.
Apil ba to siya, Mr. Chair, sa katong sa imong order?
Yes.
Ah, sige. Salamat, Mr. Chair.
Kompleto na, ah, with EB, with EB then. So we will, the secretary, the secretary di, to refer this to the committee. You know, we have, we have, we have planned the, the, how they will participate in the, in the socialized housing with the city long time ago, two thousand six pa. So, any, any reaction? There being none, the, we close the special report a part of our session. So may I request the majority floor leader to continue with our business of the day?
Gusto lang ika iannounce na nag comply ko sa imong request. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kulba kaya tong iske president, ke gaside comment for the second part of the session. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. We now proceed to the business of the day. One, two, four, as having the same, ah, subject matter, omnibus motion for one, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight zero, returning to the barangay council of barangay Balulang, the city's ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one series of two thousand twenty-three. Two, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight one, returning to the barangay council of barangay number fourteen, the city's ordinance number one series of two thousand twenty-three. Three, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight two, returning to the barangay council of barangay number two, the city's ordinance number one series of two thousand twenty-three. And four, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight three, returning to the Sangguniyang Kabataan of barangay Bayabat, the city's resolution number one series of two thousand twenty-three, covering the respective annual budgets for calendar year two thousand twenty-three with estimated incomes with the information that said resolutions are operative in their entirety. We ask the chair to recognize Councilor Yan Lam Lim.
Councilor Yan Lam Lim, the president of the legal of the barangays is recognized.
May I have a presiding officer, Councilor Attorney Edgar Cabanas? Omnibus approval from one to four? One to four, I move for, everything is in order. I move to approve proposed resolution number two zero two three dash two eight zero, two zero two three dash two eight one, two zero two three dash two eight two, two zero two three dash two eight three.
Any second. There is a motion to approve items one to four by Councilor Alam Lim. Julis, candid, any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Move to approve second final reading.
Motion to approve, dispense with second final reading, julis, candid, no objection. The same is approved.
Number five is proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight four, earnestly requesting the Department of Agriculture Regional Office Number Ten to intensify the promotion of agricultural learning sites or learning centers in the city of Cagayan de Oro which are accredited by the Agricultural Training Institute, ATI, through social media platform and other online marketing scheme. We ask the chair to recognize Councilor EB Imano.
EB, Councilor EB Imano is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Attorney, Sir Edgar Cabanas. I move for the approval of proposed resolution number two zero two three dash two eight four.
Any second, second. There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two eight four. Julis, candid, any objection? Discussion, there being none, the motion is approved.
Before the approval, for the second motion, Mr. Chairman, may we acknowledge the presence of one of the proponents, movers who came to the committee meeting. We have Colonel Cervantes.
Colonel Cervantes is recognized and would like the city council to express its thanks for your active participation in molding this, crafting this very good ordinance resolution.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, there is a motion to approve, there is a motion to dispense of second final reading, julis, candid, there being no objection, the same is approved.
Thank you, Colonel. Number six is proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight five, endorsing and or interposing no objection to the application of Adilante Gaming Enterprise Corporation represented by its president, Mr. Miss Princess V. Lalwani to operate a PAGCOR license electronic bingo, e-bingo, and electronic games, e-games at the Grand Central Arcade, Hayes Street, barangay four. The city provided that all the requirements, rules and regulations covering such operation are complied with. We ask the chair to recognize the GAB chairman, Councilor Roger Abadai.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilor Roger Abadai is recognized.
Thank you very much, majority floor and presiding officer. Nineteen twenty nineteen, pagin tawon ika apply. Karoon panin na endorsed ini sa prinarin, nagbalik balik ngang. So, ah, I move that the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two eight five shall be approved, or approval, move for approval.
Any second. There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two eight five. Discussion, discussion. Yes, discussion, Councilor James Julius is recognized.
Kataon lang ako una, Mr. Chair, Mr. Presiding Officer, wala ako nagsupak, ang klaruhon ko lang ni. Basta gali mga inani kiningsunod sa kining sa mga sugal, ato lang ni wala on ang endorsing, pero interposing no objection, yes. Stiling lang, majority floor leader. Pwede ba kay, nahimanggod? Naaman ko ydperensya kung may ka nagindoors ka o gmingon po ka, lahi po na ngabahin, kung may ka interposing no objection. So wala on na lang nato ang endorsing. Dituko, for correction na lang, I move for correction, Mr. Presiding Officer, nga dili siya endorsing but interposing no objection. Ana lang. Yes, yes, thank you, General.
So there is an amendment to the proposed, there is a motion to amend by removing the word endorsing. Second, any objection, there being none, the motion to amend is approved. Let's go to the main motion.
Ay, napatiwas pa ko sa akong manifestation, Mr. Chair. Pako nauman, Mr. Chair. Mula na to preliminary, Mr. Chair, then nalako'y mga pangutahan na po dayon. Kay dili mangod, tulung mangod ni akong gitanaw na ako dili sa atong mga glusari. Managlahe mangod ang katong sa city engineers office. So gusto lang ako klaro para once and for all, matatao na kita to, Mr. Chair ke, naay una dini gingon nga ang linear meters di base sa, sa gate. Dinaapoy, gikan bodgyapon kang acting city engineer as Ikiya, basinapod sa fence, then nasunod apod, nagbasinapod asa ang property line sa kanang lugarong niya. Ang ako lang yklaro ke, para di ita maglibog susunod ke, katong naay gingon kining sa, kining sa number six, diba? Ang pinakaduo lang atongga istoryahan ani ang Sibier man o ga Lourdes. Kung tanaw ni mo ang, ang Sibier, kani lang gingon nga, wala sila nisunod sa atong prohibision, kay nagbase sila sa diagonal line kay, wala sila kaagi-agi ugdalan. Na dabi kung imutan aon, Mr. Presiding Officer, gate ang ilang gingon, gate. Dabi kung mo base ka sa, kung pas straight ka, gikan sa kining arcade, pas straight ka, igon na ba ni mo ang, ang kural sa Sibier? Dili ba ya kamuli ko nga paingon dito sa gate, kundi ni straight. So gusto lang ako klaruhon, unsa gate atong basian? Ang kaning gate or the, sa property line niya sugod, straight sa, sa kining Golden Arcade? Paingon na then dito sa katong sa Sibier? Mula na ako pangutahan na majority floor leader. Kabalumas majority floor leader, kay diya may kinasay katambay sa kanang straight god sa kining arcade, ana, straight. Oh, dito sa arcade, so ang straight ba ya? Ang straight ba ya is the, the fence? The fence?
Dito siya, kisambay si bingguhan?
Dito siya kisambay si majority floor leader, kay ang straight, ana. And then, ang ako galibogan is, unsa magitan mo, basita sa, sa katong iyang property line sa Sibier or the, the gate? Ang swa, arcade, no? Mura ako galibogan, Mr. Chair. Eh, gusto lang ako matatao. Are we referring to the property line, the start? Or muliko pakka left, gikan sa kining arcade, left ka katong dito sa may koralis, sugod then sa gate? So how do, how do we base it? Legit, pero kung maski mo, 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 simang ka, property line may agiapon sa Sibier. Same thing with Lourdes, Mr. Chair. Sa Lourdes, may ka gate, dabi kay ang unahan sa Lourdes, iya mangyapon na compound, sulod mangyapon sa iyang kural. So, unsa basian na nato, dayon, napanay ko'y pangutahan na, Mr. Chair, wala na ton apel sa atong kalkulasyon nga puro rata Sibier and Lourdes. Pero ako kitanaw, Mr. Chair, nagocular ko sa lugar, naapamandi ay Lifetime Study Center, which is considered a school. Kung kitanaw ako sa website, Philippine Schools, napagay abka. So, ngon ni ako galibogan. Kabaloma ko, pero dili ni objection, gusto lang ako para sa sunod, kabaluna ta. We have to consider na ay abka, naapay Lifetime Study Center? Lifetime Study Center is masduol, Mr. Chair. And then, lay inasad niya punto, ang ako lang gusto klaruhon, naapod ang maternity hospital. Okay, kay karoon, wala naman nagoperate ang maternity, maternity hospital. Pero ang ako, Mr. Presiding Officer, is what if mo balik ang maternity hospital? Should we revoke the permit nga tong hihatag sa, sa kining e-games? Sumuna ako pangutahan, mo balik, pananglit kay, naarabay mga hugunugon nga iassume ni Piko ang maternity hospital and magoperate sila balik is if maternity hospital gapon. So how do we do this? Mula na ako pangutahan na, Mr. Chair, nakasalamat, ug Asdan, Cagayan de Oro.
Asdan, yes, Councilor Roger, a reaction also to the comments of.
That's a very good observation, Councilor Asdan. Okay, you know, PAGCOR is, ah, no, Adilante is a authorized gaming corporation, authorized by PAGCOR law. Now, exactly, no? If you read the, ah, page fifty-two, appendix G, page fifty-two, I think, paragraph four, it states there that the Philippine amusement and gaming corporation requirement as to distance, especially to with, no? Bahna dia. Regardless of the distance which was observed by the, by Councilor Asdan, judit. The area that the Adilante is occupying is an arcade, like, ah, Lim Kit Kais, an arcade, wherein there are plenty of gaming, ah, e-games there. It's an arcade, therefore, ah, if being an arcade, so the requirement listed in the, ano, as the findings of the city engineers and other authority does not matter because they are exempted for that, for the distance. So that is the, that is the justification, Mr. Chair and my colleagues, if you read this attachment, appendix G for page fifty-two. So the three hundred meter distance restriction and the one kilometer, five hundred meter radial distance requirement shall not apply to malls or arcade or three-star hotels, resort accredited by DOTC or PAGCOR or by the local government units concerned. Yeah.
Okay, so ikaw siya, Councilor James.
But again, ayaw lang kabala ka, Councilor Roger Abadai. Gusto lang ako ni para lang matatao, but I'm not interposing any objection, I'm not objecting. Clarula na ko, kung may ka three hundred, na naabayay ordinance sa chapter seventy-one, section two seven five, sa atong codified ordinance, naggingon nga sulod sa two hundred linear meters, Bostorts. And then, pwede ka mo ubos sa kanang two hundred linear meters, pero di ka pwede absolute god ubos pagigas sa fifty. Um, niya naay nakabutan dini, pwede ka mo ubos sa fifty, pero naay schedule. Nagbaasila po sa atong ordinance sa. Ah, naaman mo, majority floor leader, Councilor Cabanas. So naay schedule, na kaingon, dili, inyo maning ordinance sa. No, no, inyo, I was just, just asking, kay inyo maning ordinance sa. So naay schedule, but pwede within fifty nga meters, diba, Bostorts? You're familiar with this? So. So, pwede siya, pero na schedule, unsa mo na siya. So, sa karoon, sa ato ni gab kabahin, mas mo prevail man ang atong ordinance sa, kumpara sa Pagcor, kay atong niteritorio.
Pero di magkamo object.
Ah, wala ko na object, nakutahan lang ako, Mister Chair, for the record, at least maklaro. Para lang ba sa sunod ba maklaro nato, napo problema sa maternity hospital. So, gusto lang ako matubag lang ni Consulor Abadai.
That's correct, now, ang utanas ako kay Consulor Asdan Judit, as a lawyer, which has higher hierarchy, the national law or the ordinance? The national law, Pagcor is, was approved nineteen eighty-three, and when was the ordinance was approved?
So, karoon, tinubaga, naghiyalargah, kapunin.
Presiding Officer, kay dilip ang tagisturya, national or local law, ang atong gaesgutan sa atong teritorio, labi na nagconflictto, kinse mo patig babaw, local law.
Local law, oh, local law ko no, siman. I know, you know.
I just repeat to the wisdom of the member of the committee.
Yes, I think we should not anymore, I think, the, yes, he's not objecting, he's just expressing his opinion, but it doesn't mean that he's objecting. So, any other comment? Yes, huh? Abstain, ama comment, comment, yes, Consulor Espers.
Mister Chair, just a manifestation lang, dilip, wala, gaya po kung nagobject ni, wala ako nagobject ni. Nagtaping magotag Pagcor, then I remember the last time we had a committee hearing about gapon atong ni Poker, I saw a document from Pagcor mismo. Pero, dear Mister Chair, wala ko'y nakita ang attachment, I don't know lang, basing wal, nalimtan bag attach, I was looking for it, Mister Chair, if nabataan na kay, I think, ang Pagcor, naman na siya certification nga siya mismo, niingon na nga, okay siya sa layo sa sa eskwelahan, layo siya sa ingana. So, my question is, nabataan na Kuya Roger Abadai or nalimtan lang u attach? Mula'y akong gepangita, Mister Chair, mora, mora.
Yes.
There is, that's why I requested before the start of the, when you required, when you required the Secretariat, but to bring all the records, or it is in the record, it has given a record in the City Legal Office. In fact, the City Legal Office has no objection on this application.
Nadie. Okay, any other comment? Yes, Consulor General Rumi Kaliso.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Actually, during the nineteen council, I was the one who objected for the immediate approval of this request. Because, of course, first, we have to harmonize the local law and the national law. And we have to make it sure that the approval of this establishment will work for the benefit of our city. So, now, I'm still a member of the committee and I seconded for the approval because when we tried to look into the measurements and the exemptions, because it is an arcade, the only thing now is, first, let us be consistent on our laws. Siguro, we have an assignment to make the ordinance consistent with the national law, that's first. And second, we will see to it that indeed, as an arcade, it does not disrupt the, the orderliness of the city in that particular area, Mister Chair. So, maybe in the enforcement of the laws, let us see that the bingo, the bingo, what it calls business there, will not disrupt the orderliness of the area. So, just two assignments, first, let us make our local law consistent with the national law. And second is, let us see to it that the enforcement office, or the enforcement agency of our city government shall really make sure that it does not disrupt orderliness. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Yes, Consulor, Majority Floor Leader, Iron Mark Nakaya.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer, Consulor Edgar Cabanlas. Actually, this has been dragged for more than one year already by the Committee on the Laws and Rules, on the basis that things should be thrashed out, laws should be identified which may run conflict to the operation of this type of business. But personally, Mister Chairman, while we comply with, with the laws and regulations and even our local ordinance, to the effect that we authorize the existence of this type of business in Cagayan de Oro. But my personal view is, let, and once in the life of the council, the games and amusement should identify an area and make an arcade, arcade out of the, this type of operations to be housed in one area. My concern, Mister Chairman, is for another applicant, similar to the nature of the business, to apply in other area and apply in another area, and what will happen to Cagayan de Oro? China, lest I be misunderstood, Mister Chairman, we know that there are many who have been a part of descriptions as gamblers. But they only authorize one, one area, and it's in Macau. Nothing more. The huge, and perhaps the biggest, landed area for a country, China, only has one hub for betting and gambling, only in Macau. All others are prohibited. So, what will happen to Cagayan de Oro, Mister Chairman? Again, if one will apply and another will apply and more will apply, maybe perhaps we can anticipate already, five, ten years from now, every barangay has its own operation. And select to exempt itself from regulations and build an arcade. You just create one new form of building and provide amenities for, for kids, for, for an amusement. And on the other side, this type of business. So, what would happen? So, it would be a challenge, Mister Chairman. Again, I don't object because it's within the purview of the law, but I object to the future anticipated issues in Cagayan de Oro if we will not make a stand as regards this type of operation, Mister Chairman. So, we challenge the games and amusement to perhaps collectively put wisdom on the direction of how we utilize our area and identify an area that would house this type of business and relocate all of these businesses into one area and so that we can effectively enforce our ordinances and see whether our young people are entering the area, our people who may be less fortunate not to be seen in the area. Politicians were prohibited to enter the premises. Military personnel, diba, appeal man, military personnel and all those in the government who are prohibited to, to, to camp in the area. So, we can effectively enforce if it is, if it is housed in one area, Mister Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, if you can remember the case of Magtahas versus Pagcor, father of Suez, former mayor, Di Magtahas versus Pagcor, when Pagcor was applying for, for the operation of a casino here at Price Hotel, when ya, there was an objection by the mayor then, Pagdo Magtahas, father of. Napildi ang atong mayor dini, ni daog ang Pagcor, dili ngang Supreme Court, we cannot stop Pagcor, that's a national law. But ni daog gapon si Mayor Magtahas, magi makasulod. The bottom liner is, bisan na ibalaw, kung kita gaya di gusto, okay na na, but, mula gina, kanusa magitan maka, mahuma, magpadayon nga, di tey alaw ang casino or kining, kining ang mga, kinituyilang proposal, kana, isla diuro, muna, ke, diba? So, so, unsa ni tabo, so ang Pagcor, to nasa upol. Di ko makaingon nga, kining, kung naas upol, lugar safe na kita siya Cagayan de Oro sa gambling, ke, puwak kaya, nung duarama, meramakusara, matak kilometer na gikan sa. So, it defeats the purpose. Now, sakto ka to, ang atong observation, Consulor Nakaya, everybody here, nga magbutang kita sa, unsa patong decision, unsa begin, oh, magbutang ta, unsa ka lugar nga, atong panon, i-specify nga, okay, dini kera magbutang, kay kundita magbuo na na, bisakas ang atong casino, para sa dabaw ni, casino, dini sa, oh, bukas yun, bisakas ang casino. But anyway, that's part of our kininga diskasan. I hope nga, the future leaders, Cagayan de Oro, the young generation of Consulors can decide on that for us. So, kumana? No more? So, report man to, ba, ibalik siya, muna sa. Ah, motion, special report to. Libog siya, kuwadun nga, abi komanu. So, there's a motion for the approval of proposed resolution, number twenty-three dash three-five, there being, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is approved.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, there's a motion to dispense second final reading, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Corollary motion to item number six, Mister Chairman, is for, to, to ask the secretary to transcribe the proceeding during the discussion on item six and forward, be forwarded to the Committee on the Games and Amusement for Study and Possible Legislative Measures.
That would be a legacy, Consulor Abadai, if you can.
It's a challenge.
So, the, the Secretariat, the secretary is directed to transcribe the discussion and manifestations of this, this ordinance and to submit the same to the Committee on Games and Amusement for Proper Attention.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. We have additional items as item number seven and eight, eight, nine.
Inclusion, for inclusion, I was iran by one of the representative of the INAR, now president, begging our council that a resolution should be passed, no? In support with the resolution of Barangay Gusa, Kugman, Indahag, that our kining atong Bigaan River Rehabilitation Project will participate on the river for life or national entry. Now, nakapasan nata sa steering committee, so what they need is the resolution from our City Council to recognize or support this entry or national entry sa program by the DE-NAR.
So, the additional items, Mister Chairman, seven, eight, nine and ten.
There's a motion to include, to include the, the additional items in the agenda. Second, any objection, there being no objection, the same is approved.
Number seven is proposed ordinance number, this is resolution. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Ayo, representing the City Government, ah, yeah, ordinance, City Government of Cagayan de Oro to enter into and sign the Memorandum of Understanding with the Department of Science and Technology Regional Office Ten, DOST Ten, represented by Yusek Sancho A. Maburang. And the University of Science and Technology of the Philippines, USTP, represented by its president, Dr. Ambrosio B. Cultura II, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the project entitled "Support to the Development of Cagayan de Oro City as a Smart City in the Province of Misami Sorrental Under the Terms and Conditions Stipulated therein." Move for its approval, Mister Chairman.
Any second, there's a motion to approve proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash one twenty, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Move to approve second final reading.
There's a motion to dispense second final reading, duly seconded, the same is approved.
Number eight, number eight. Okay, for number eight, we have proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one two one, creating deposition of City Government Assistant Department Head SG Twenty-Four in the Plantillion of the City Health Office, the city, the funds necessary for the payment of the salaries, pera, JSIS, pag-ibig, Philhealth and other benefits appertainent thereto shall be taken from the allocation of the item, City Health Officer Two, item number two SG Twenty-Five of the same office, which is hereby abolished pursuant to Civil Service Commission Memorandum Circular Number Twelve, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Two, dated November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, entitled "Two Thousand Twenty-Two Guidelines and Standards in the Establishment of Organizational Structure and Staffing Patterns in the Local Government Units," certified urgent by the City Mayor. Move for its approval.
Any second, there is a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash one two one, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Move to approve second final reading.
There's a motion to dispense second final reading, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is approved.
Number nine is proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight six, earnestly requesting the Artificial Intelligence AI Center of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, USTP System, through its president, Dr. Ambrosio B. Cultura II, to conduct a research study on the use and application of modern technology systems or AI technology as a tool for peace building, peace development, prevention and maintenance of peace and order in the city. We have proponents, Consulor Kaliso and Cabanlas. Move for its approval, Mister Chairman.
There's a motion to approve item number nine, proposed resolution number twenty-three dash two eight six, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Move to approve second final reading.
There's a motion to approve, auto-dispense second final reading, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is approved.
As articulated by Consulor Roger Abadai, the GAB chairman, number ten, proposed resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight seven, adopting the Bisigan, Sigan inon, ayaw dito si Bisigan, layo kayo, the Bigaan River Rehabilitation Project under the R-I-V-E-R, subject to styling, move for its approval, Mister Chairman.
Any second, there's a motion to approve item number ten, proposed resolution number twenty-three dash two eight seven, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Uh, the styling should highlight.
Subject to styling.
Yes, the styling should highlight our nomination that would describe the project as a concept, now a reality, and would provide impact to the, to the community where the project was implemented. So, move to approve second final reading.
Any second, there's a motion to dispense second final reading, there being no objection, and duly seconded, the same is hereby approved.
There being no other pending, Mister Chairman. Again, happy birthday, Maria Lourdes Malu Gan.
Any second, there's a motion to adjourn session, duly seconded, there being no objection, the same is approved. Session adjourn. Session adjourn.